And the public and Finance Department as well to order at this time. I think President Pro Tem Matt Manix is on his way, I think. Last thing we believe. So, thank you all for being here. I'm going to turn it over to the Finance Director to start.
I believe the work session tonight is on tax classifications and more specifically, the cap for the commercial rate in relation to the residential rate. The council agenda item was to change the cap from 150% to 125% of the residential rate. As explained during the council meeting, the commercial rate currently is up to 150%, which means you can bring it down to the 125% without changing the ordinance. But by actually changing the ordinance to a cap of 125%, that would then make that the high end or the cap. So, you could never go above the 125% without coming back and rewriting the ordinance. So, that's what I believe is the summary for tonight's work session.
Thank you. Any comments from the council?
So, my understanding was that you had to change the ordinance to reduce. So, you don't have to change the ordinance. By changing the ordinance, you reduce the cap of 150, which is the maximum, to 125 as a new cap. So, you establish a new cap.
Correct.
Okay.
With the ability to always go back up to 150 if you desire.
If you read the ordinance, right?
Change the ordinance. Right. So. Where's Manix?
I think he's coming.
Oh.
Okay, so.
He's the one that called us.
Anybody from the public wishing to speak on this motion, this topic? Stanley?
We've got an hour and a half here, guys, to fill.
You want to come up and use the mic?
As I said many times before, I think any time going in a direction of equality, justice for all, we should all have that we tax the same. We shouldn't like, you know, they, in order to be equal, it's right to be equal. And if there's significant reason to do something that's unequal to people in town, then let's hear it. If there's significant reason to do that. But other than that, we should keep, we should try our best to make sure that we're all treated the same way. And that goes with taxes. It goes with the law. You know, any law out there, I expect the policeman's going to stop us based on the law, not based on some other issue. And, you know, we've gone over this many times. It's just wrong for, the businesses have the ability to pay more tax. They'll pay more tax because you'll assess them. You'll assess a business per square foot. I'm sure if you're going to assess it here, per square foot, a business is worth more than residential. So, you're going to tax that business more. You don't need to give him a higher rate. He's going to pay more taxes based on the value of his property. So, he already is getting, paying his fair share, if you will. And that'll be based on, and that's what we ought to investigate more closely if you want to make sure that the evaluations are right. You know, we ought to look at recent sales. That's what we do on, you know, evaluation. Look at recent sales. And what's the recent commercial sales? And let's make sure that our values are correct on the commercial and then apply that as a way to get money off the rich guys, you know? And that's, and I think it's wrong to tackle it in this fashion on a rate. You do it as assessment and not as a rate. So, we must back off.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak?
You break the mic. It's another five cents per thousand.
So, this is being televised, so I want to make sure.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Wave to the crowd, Patrick.
Great. This is the campaign internet sensation.
So, these are just simple facts. I'm going to just read what I wrote to somebody today, so everyone is clear on pretty much the facts. This is not a subjective email. So, each year, the town of Narragansett strives to produce a fair and equitable tax roll in compliance with the laws and statutes of the state of Rhode Island. As it stands today, the current residential, and I've got the experts here to correct me if I'm wrong. As it stands today, the current residential tax roll is approximately $4.2 billion. And the current commercial tax roll is approximately $298 million. The rates established to ensure we can fund our budget priorities currently are effective rate for homesteaders, because we have a homestead ordinance in town. The effective rate as it stands right now is $9.50 per $1,000 of assessed value. For non-homesteaders, people that do not, are not eligible for a homestead, is $10.50 or $10.56 per $1,000 of assessed value. And the commercial rate as it stands right now is $15.84 per $1,000 of assessed value for their commercial property. So, the town of Narragansett has a multi-rate strategy for collecting taxes. As you can see from what I just described, during a reevaluation year and only in a reevaluation year, the state has given the town council the authority to adjust these rates as they see fit. The current agenda item, which we continued from the prior meeting and moved to this workshop, requesting a change in the higher rate from 150 times that of the lowest rate to 100 or 1.25 times that of the lowest rate is within the town council's authority. So, all of that said, the proposed adjustment to our rates applied to our current tax roll would look like $9.69 per $1,000 of assessed value for homesteaders, $10.77 per $1,000 of assessed value for non-homesteaders, and the commercial rate would be lowered to $13.46 per $1,000 of assessed value for their commercial property. So, to put it in perspective, the overall effective change to residential property owners to fund this change would be 19 cents per $1,000 of assessed value for homesteaders and 21 cents per $1,000 for assessed value for non-homesteaders. A simple example of a home assessed at $350,000 after a homestead exemption would be roughly $66.50 annually based on the current rates and assessments. So, finally, as the town recognizes the needs of all its residents and business owners, there are eligible exemptions, other than the homestead, to apply for if you are in need on the town's website, including an exemption of tangible property for commercial property owners up to a certain dollar amount, if that's still an exemption or if you have to apply for that, I'm not sure. But there is.
It's standard.
A standard exemption. So, it comes right off of there.
Comes right off the top.
So, that's it. I just wanted to, I wanted to read that, so you know that, first of all, I understand the numbers and also that the impact is roughly 19 cents again for homesteaders and 21 cents per $1,000 of assessed value for non-homesteaders for this change.
Nice job, Mike. Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak? Harry?
Do you all have a copy of this?
I do.
Everybody have it? Jill, you have it? So, as you know, it's my favorite topic. And in preparation for this, I had asked Alan, and he graciously sent me the latest, you know, roll-up, so that I was, you know, working from, you know, current data. And, you know, I just want to say at the outset of this that, you know, NPR is, I think we're all aware that taxes affect everybody. And if you make, you know, a change in, you know, one group, it affects another group. And I also know that this three-tier thing that we've been proponents of, you know, many people think is, you know, complicated. So, I just wanted to contrast that there are really only two choices here. And essentially, you know, both of these choices, as you can see from the slide, go ahead, Mike, you can, yeah, thank you, you know, have what I would call three effective rates. Right now, we have a commercial rate, as Mike had said, of 1584, residential rate of 1056, and a homestead exemption, which is 10%, which is equivalent to roughly a 950 rate. Obviously, you know, the homestead, if you take, you know, 10% off the value of a house or leave the value at 100% and take, you know, 10% off the tax rate, you get the same tax. So, essentially, there are three rates in both systems. The difference in the three-tier is that it sets the best rate universally for all residents that, you know, occupy their own homes versus the rental population. And so, if we applied the current system and replaced it with the three-tier system, you could essentially do the same thing, keeping the commercial rate at 1584, dropping the owner-occupied rate to, you know, 950. But you'd have to have the non-owner-occupied rate, that is, the rental homes, at something greater than 1056. That's why there's a question mark there. And that's because the homestead exemption now applies to roughly a third of the homes. Whereas, if you went to the three-tier system, all owner-occupied homes, which is about 67% of all homes, would see the better rate. And so, you'd have to compensate for that by increasing the rental rate to something beyond 1056. Not much beyond it, but something beyond it. So, again, the homestead exemption applies only to full-time residents, as you've defined it. But the three-tier owner-occupied rate would apply to all owner-occupied homes, which is 67% of the population. And if we go to the next slide, this is right from the tax roll-up. It's essentially 8,886 total properties. And again, it's roughly 5,954 of those are single-family homes that are lived in, you know, by their owners. And 33% of them, the remainder, are the rental properties. But of that 67% of owner-occupied homes, you can see that it's split nearly 50/50. 48% of those homes, nearly 3,000 of them, are seasonal residents. And with the current system, we are taxing those seasonal residents who get no income from their house. They maintain a home here for their own pleasure, paying the same tax rate as the rental homes, which are income-bearing properties. Again, I would argue that they're businesses. So, Narragansett's dilemma is that, first of all, a third of all properties are rental. Nearly half of the remaining properties are seasonal. But the current tax structure burdens, you know, residents with the added cost from the rentals, whether they're seasonal or full-time, in the, you know, in the context of, you know, more money spent on administration, police, water, sewer, you know, neighborhood light, et cetera. So, just looking at it, why is there such a problem here? The next slide, and Mike, if you would just switch to the next one, is, you know, sort of, you know, my take at, you know, a simple, you know, explanation of what I call Narragansett's perfect, you know, storm, where by, you know, renting, you know, in the summer and renting in the college year, it's very easy to come up with, you know, $35,000 a year or more in income from a three-bedroom house. You combine that with the low interest rates we've had since the recession, and you get a boom for investors, most of whom, three-quarters of whom, do not pay taxes here. They don't live here. And so, the result of this boom is something we all know. Any home under $500,000 is ripe for picking by investors. Property values are so high, they aren't affordable for families. The schools are now underutilized to the point where we need to report students, and we have a great school. The police and administration costs are double what they should be. But the residential and commercial taxpayers are subsidizing rental investors. These are facts. Again, this is obvious from the data. And so, it sponsors the question, what is going to happen here if this rental population grows from this, you know, one-third to 50%? Because it does continue to grow. And while I do believe there are some positive factors offsetting it, the fact is, it's still growing. Go ahead, Mike, if you would. So, it seems to me, and, you know, NPR, you know, surveyed the membership, you know, earlier this year, others will speak about that, that the only real way to address fairness in taxation and have an effect on these types of trends is through taxes. It's really the only real tool. You know, the homestead exemption is a good thing, and it's good that you did it, but it has limitations. First of all, the rate is controlled by the state. It does limit your flexibility to adjust your taxation easily based on demographic changes or economic changes. And the qualification based on legal residency, I believe, and NPR believes, to be bad for Narragansett, simply because it disincentivizes such a large pool of seasonal rent, excuse me, seasonal, you know, owner occupants, who you could say this plan, you know, motivates to become renters. If I'm a seasonal homeowner and I have to pay the same taxes, you know, somebody deriving income from renting my house, why then should I not rent my house? So, most towns have moved away from this, and if you look, and it's the reason they have, is because it gives, you know, governing bodies such as yourselves more flexibility to adjust the policy, to deal with the goals set forth by the town's comprehensive plan in this case. You know, Providence, for example, has a significant difference. I don't recall the rates, but Providence has a significant difference between the rental rate and the owner-occupied rate, they use this particular system. So, just. If you could switch again the slide. You know, just in going through the roll-up, and, you know, by the way, there's an awful lot to be gained and mined from this, you know, data, that in the interest of developing fair and more progressive, you know, tax policies that do align with the goals of the comprehensive plan, there's a lot to be gleaned by studying this data. For example, there are 1,140 homes, everybody says there's nothing for sale under 500, but there were 1,140 homes on the tax roll-up with a tax value of under $250,000. That doesn't mean they would sell for that, but that is the tax value. Okay, these homes are ripe, we would argue, for tax credits and subsidies that by themselves could attract young families by making affordable homes even more affordable. First-time, you know, buyers could stay for five years, pay the town back when they sell it. So, there are ways to do this that we think are a far more progressive and advantageous means of addressing affordable housing than raping the zoning laws by continuing to increase the density at the behest of developers. The other interesting thing, and there are a lot of other interesting points in the data, but one other thing, and here's the listing of the various, you know, numbers of properties under the various tax codes. It's interesting that only two industrial properties in this town have a tax value greater than $1 million. Only two. I don't know what they are, but there's only two. And again, that's supportive of the fact that, you know, many of us have raised the issue in the past, that while we have some very successful commercial businesses here and we benefit from good restaurants and all the things we have here, we do not have a lot of industrial professional businesses. And these are the types of businesses that pay good salaries, that enable families to move here and buy homes. And so, you know, that's a good use of tax incentives. These kinds of things can much more easily be supported and implemented, and they all need further study. I'm just, you know, saying, here's a top-level, you know, idea set, which can be addressed much more effectively using a three-tier tax structure than the one that we have. Again, in both cases, you have three effective rates. You know, and so, in summary, you know, some of the benefits we think make the three-tier approach the best, you know, solution for Narragansett is that it does set rates based on the economic and demographic goals set forth in the comprehensive plan, which you spend a lot of time on here, put a lot of money into. And it does encourage commercial businesses while somewhat discouraging investment rentals. Now, to say discouraging them doesn't mean this suggests we should eliminate them, we're going to hurt the summer season. None of that is going to happen, because you're not going to make, you know, changes that are great enough. You just want to balance the equation more favorably to bend the curve back toward ways that we can get more families. By giving all owner occupants a lower rate than possible with a homestead exemption, we encourage people who are a real asset to this town that keep nice properties, they don't burden the town, they don't burden the police, and they're an asset to the town. And many of them, although they don't make this their permanent residence anymore. And we have to understand, I think, that Rhode Island is not a good place to have illegal residents as you get older. And I myself are in this situation with other homes. People leave and they go to Florida and these places because the estate tax goes away. And frankly, to someone like me, the estate tax would be a big hit to my kids. But that doesn't mean these people who have, you know, done this, I have not elected to do that, but these people who do do it still have a genuine commitment to Narragansett, and we all know many of them. So, you get a lot more flexibility with it. You can address some of the liabilities you now have in the budget. And so, here is just an example. And again, I mean this only as an example, because this deserves, you know, I think, really close, you know, scrutiny. Here's the current tax, where, as I've said, the homestead, you know, exemption amounts to an effective rate of about 950, you know, versus the, you know, standard rate applied to seasonal homeowners and landlords of 1056 and then the 1584 for commercial. As, you know, Mike said, and, you know, our numbers pretty much agree here, if you keep that tax structure and reduce the commercial rate by 17%, as is proposed, you're going to move the effective rate for a homestead recipient to about $10. And, you know, the seasonal residents and the landlords could be held the same in order to get down to a 1315 rate as opposed to the 1584. If you did that same thing via use of the three-tier system, considering that you can only make a 4% change a year, right, you'd be at 1014 instead of 1003, the first year for homestead, for those people who did, you know, previously qualify for the homestead, the full-time residents, you'd be at 1014 also for the seasonal residents, but you'd have risen the landlord rate, the non-owner-occupied rate, by 4%. And again, we'd keep the commercial rate, you know, down 25% to the, excuse me, 17% to the 1315. If you did that for three years, 4%, 4%, 4% reduction of the owner-occupied rate and if, you know, a 4% 4% increase to the landlord rate, you would end up in the third year with a rate for owner occupants that's essentially equivalent to the current, you know, homestead rate we now have, essentially equivalent. And it would apply to both the full-time residents and the seasonal residents. But you'd have increased the landlord rate over those three years by a total amount of 12%. So, one would go down by 12% at 4% a year, the other would go up. And you would have, you know, still the, you know, 17% reduction from the current rate in commercial. And so, this is just, you can juggle this any way you want. As you know, you can't go beyond 4% a year. But, you know, this exemplifies the fact that you can get to where we are in a more equitable way and have more flexibility. And then, you can juggle these things. If you want to have a more creative, you know, home credit for first-time buyers, these types of things, you have the flexibility in this to do it. You can juggle it as you wish. And by making it incremental each year at the rate of, you know, 4%, you don't change things so dramatically. Somebody is concerned, well, what effect would it have on their rental property? Well, do it for one year and see. I mean, you can't do it in, you can't do it all in one year, anyway. So, there's a built-in, you know, protection here, I think, in that you make incremental changes over time and you can get to a more, you know, a fairer and more progressive tax plan and one that addresses the unique, you know, needs of this town, which are different from Jamestown, right? They're different from Providence. Every town is different. And so, it's important to adopt a tax policy that's, you know, congruent with, again, the goals. We spent, you know, years and many people saying what should be in the comprehensive plan. So, anyway, thank you all and hope it was useful.
This is the first time I've seen it, so it's tough for me to get a handle on it. Anyway, okay, let's go back to page. Which one was that? The one about the investor buying a house for $500,000 and it's a boom? Okay, you're a businessman, Harry. Would you buy a business for $500,000 that produces a 4% cap rate?
Well, it depends on what business I was in, Patrick. And I think $500,000 is at the high end of where some of these homes do sell.
Right.
It depends on the business I was in. But $35,000 a year per year of a pretty steady income.
But that's gross. You're not including taxes, you're not including cleaning up, you're not including linen, you're not including people not showing up, deposits, lawyers, NPR expense.
Those P and L issues, this is a revenue line.
Right.
Even if they rinse out even, you're still gaining the appreciation of the house without, you know, any expense.
Yeah, but my point is, this isn't a bonanza here, okay?
It is a bonanza.
There's some of these people, they're making, you know, some of, just buying a house because they may want to retire here and they may want to just get a leg in. And because the cost in Rhode Island is so expensive to live here, this is the way that they can offset their costs to get a placeholder, so they can move to Narragansett.
Very few people buying institutional properties like this to rent them year-round end up moving in the house, Patrick.
Well, I know, I know a few.
Well, you might know a few, but I don't know any.
I know a few that do it.
But I will say this, I will say that you're right. It's not everybody that falls into that, you know, tax category. And there are people who only rent in the summer, they only rent to friends, they don't make anywhere near this. It's not the bulk of renters. And maybe some of those people deserve consideration if you were to implement this. Maybe that's where you have some triggers as to, you know, levels of income or the amount of time you rent it. You know, there's a lot of.
Yeah, but it's endless.
It's not endless, Patrick. It's not endless. It just, it just needs an open-minded look at how to do this in the fairest way. And these numbers, by the way, I've talked with a lot of people before putting these numbers in this presentation. And I, once again, as you well know, $500,000 is at the high end of houses that fit into this category, and many of them are renting to, you know, larger numbers of people than they report. And so, it is a perfect storm in that sense. And there's a built-in market between the summer business and the school. And so, that's all. Just remember that the seasonal people get no help. They get no income. So, anyway.
I have a couple of comments.
Yep.
So, a couple of things. One is, talk about your diligence in keeping the flame lit for three-tier. I mean, it's a very, it is a very progressive and very, you can use this anywhere, and it's very effective. I want to go back, however, and just say two things. One is, so the motion that was, the motion that was on the agenda two weeks ago was a fairly simple agenda item to just lower the commercial rate by, you know, .25, which would effectively be whatever that percentage is. A couple of good things. One is, you know, the impact to who I have talked to, which, again, there are fringes of the commercial property world, but I talk to the folks that own, that live here and own small businesses and produce all that we utilize, right? So, you can, there's a bunch of examples, you know, Monta and Stock and, you know, et cetera, et cetera. Those are the people that I talk to. And the fact is, you know, a 17% or. And the fact is, you know, a 17% or whatever that effective rate change would be is not a huge impact, as you can see, it's, you know, we're talking 19 and 21 cents. So that's, that's, that's what I hold on to as a good thing. Second thing is, in terms of immediacy, we can only do this in a reevaluation year if we were to do it, and we have until, I think, if I'm not mistaken, the end of the year to basically decide in its entirety. That does not prohibit, that's not accurate?
Budget season, end of budget season.
End of, so it would be the end of next budget season? I thought it was the end of the reevaluation year.
When you're presented with the budget.
Right.
During a reevaluation, if you have all the values and you have the ability to modify if you want your ratios, your tax classifications.
Right. So my question is, we've already passed a budget for this fiscal year.
Right.
So that we've used the assessments for this fiscal year.
Right. This year is done.
So if we, if this change takes effect, if the vote occurs and we decide to lower the rate, it's for next, the next budget year. But we have to make that decision by when?
Budget, by the end of the budget season, next spring.
Okay. All right. So, so I'm unclear about that. So we can, we can, we can address that in a second? Let me just finish one point before I forget. So this is a great plan. I'm not, I'm not saying that there's one or the other. What I'm suggesting is, a reduction in the commercial rate, to me, is absolutely apropos for this community, period. That's one statement. The next statement would be, you can look at alternatives between now and the next budget year. You know, so far, that, this particular plan has not been advocated or has not come up, but there could be other, there could be other alternatives as well that have not come up and have not been authored. So this was, to me, a first step that I think is very necessary in the town's, you know, history of the last 15 years, adopting a more equitable rate for the commercial property owners in town. But I'm still, I want to know, because we've put this on now, in the anticipation that this would have some discussion and take some time, you know, but also gives others time to think about alternatives. So my question is, what is the exact date that we have to make sure that this happens by?
It would be similar, it would be similar to what we did this budget cycle. So we asked for the homestead exemption, which could go up to 10%, and we said, what does zero look like? What does five look like? What does 10 look like? So in April, we'll, we ask, what does 140 look like? What does 125 look like? What does 110 look like? And we see the impact, and we make a decision there. Correct?
The one note I would make is, if you make changes to your tax classifications, they cannot be changed until your next reevaluation, which currently by law is every three years. So any changes you make in your percentages and your ratios for next budget would also hold for the next two years after that.
Which is why next this year is a good time to do it. They're not mutually exclusive.
No, but that's my question. So is it, if they're not mutually exclusive, so assessments and revaluations happen every three years? So is there a defined timeline and period that that reevaluation year ends? Is it, I mean, is it, is it up to and including the dates that we discussed, the new budget, and then the reevaluation? Can we reevaluate property in March of next year?
No, we reevaluate as of.
My question is, if this has to happen in a revaluation year, when does that revaluation year end?
There's two things going on.
Yeah, that's, that's got it. The assessments are as of December 31st of a given year.
So that means we have until December 31st?
No, no. I have till December 31st, 2017, to decide that a house is worth $500,000. You have until April to decide what the taxes are going to be on that house, generically speaking.
So the revaluation year, so if you classify, if you assess a property between the budget passage and the end of the year, that applies to next tax year, next tax bill.
My analysis today will appear on next year's tax roll.
So if this rate is lowered in the next couple meetings, it's for their next tax bill.
Correct.
The bill goes out July 1st, 2018.
Just want to be clear.
Right.
You know, just one, excuse me, just one final point. I don't, I don't know anybody that disagrees that it would be good to lower the commercial rate, and most of you know I have a piece of commercial property, so I wouldn't mind it being lowered. The question is, who should pay for it? And what's the fairest way to distribute the tax burden? And there's three classes of people. There's commercial businesses, there are owner occupants, both full-time and seasonal, who get no income from their properties, just bills, and there are landlords who do get income, different amounts of income, but it's nonetheless income. And, and so an offset in that, in that, you know, direction seems ultimately fair. You're not saying you're going to double their taxes, you're saying you're going to incrementally change it to make sure that we say to people who want to just enjoy Narragansett and keep nice properties that we value that, and we want you here. As simple as that.
And, Harry, can I just, and here again, just factual statements. In your analysis here, you, if you go to a three-tier rate, the law says that your highest rate can't be any higher than one and a half times your lowest rate. So in your example, where you have a $9 lowest rate and a $15 and change highest rate, that, you can't do that.
No, no, no. The example I used is the last one, I think, where you see that it, you know, fits within, where, where.
I'm talking on page one.
I was just using that to exemplify the difference between the current system and a three-tier system. I realize that you can't have that much of a spread. I was just using it to exemplify that there's three rates.
Right. And we don't, the council doesn't pick the rate, they pick the ratio.
Right.
So, so those numbers are derived from the budget they pass.
But the numbers I have for the three-year tax plan here, I think, do fit within that ratio on the last page. I think those do fit within.
And with the budget.
Yes. Yeah, it all rolls up to 49. whatever million dollar.
It's shy. His last line actually comes out, tax revenue is shy.
Yes.
By how much?
About a million and a half dollars.
It rolled up to about 49.3 or 4 million.
That's enough to go to a single tax rate for commercial, 1.5 million. All right, Harry, I'm with you.
You know, it's, it's not so much the numbers as your philosophy.
Yeah, yeah, I roll this up, you know, based on the analysis I did, and I rolled it up to 49.2 million, or 3 million, or 4 million. It's within a, you know, a rounding error here of what the tax roll-up is. I don't know exactly what your number is. But that's the number I computed from.
Well, and I'm just, I'm just pointing that out, I'm not.
No, no, I understand procedurally, it has to work that way. I'm just trying to provide examples to show you the parity of this.
Yeah, and I.
To get to the same place, you know, via this means.
Yeah, you can, you can get to a similar place, and mathematically, you can get to a similar place. I'll give you that.
Well, you can get if you look at the details.
Right, and so, no, right. And I'll, and I'll use an example, and not that, you know, you would be studying this in the, you know, if the public is interested, but, you know, the city of Providence uses this mechanism, right? They've been given this mechanism. The city of Newport, I think, uses a, not a three-tier, but a multi, there's two rates in the city of Newport.
Just like Narragansett.
Just like Narragansett, right.
Without the homestead, yeah.
Right. And Providence does not have a homestead and uses multiple tiers.
They used to have a homestead.
And they, and they tax rental properties, I think, 33% more than residential properties, right? So, so it is, to your point, a philosophical discussion, there's some subjective nature to it. I think what I've stayed true to is how much it would cost me personally, as a full-time resident, to help lower, you know, Mr. Combs' rate at Monty and Stock. That's where my head is, and it's going to cost me 19 cents a thousand. So that's where I, I just wanted to say that publicly, so it's clear that these are all great alternatives that don't have to go away after this workshop. These can still be refined and discussed and talked about. What's, what we put this workshop together for was the motion that was on two weeks ago.
Whether you do that now in the way you proposed it, or look to do this, whether it's done now, as long as it's done before December, you accomplish the same goal, so you might.
Well, before the next budget.
Yeah.
Before the next budget, yeah.
And also, by the way, you know, so again, I'm still unclear though, and I think I got two different answers. When I read the statute, the state statute, it talks about lowering the cap or lowering the ratio by ordinance change. And I'd have to review it again, I was, Patty was here, because I had him kind of review it. And then I talked to you, and you said, no, you don't have to change the ordinance.
Because it's up to, it's not a specific by rate. Our ordinance says up to 150%. So the ordinance already has the caveat.
Right, I get it, but our ordinance reads differently than the state statute.
But the class is already set. So we're not changing classes, so you don't have to do it in the reval year. If you change classes, you go to owner, this owner-occupied, non-owner split, that's a class shift, that jies with the revaluation year, but we're up to 150, that's why we can go up to 150 in April.
Which is why this year is a good year to consider this. And again, the benefit of this is really to take into account, you know, the rental problem, right? Either way, you can give commercial businesses this discount, but it just seems that the only way to address the growth in rentals and have more of a family focus is to do this. I don't see any other alternative, because there isn't anything else that can so crisply, you know, define, that's the reason the state did it, is to say, there's rental properties, and there's properties that are losing.
I have one question.
I've got a couple more questions.
I just had one, can I ask?
Sure.
The three-tier that we, was presented to the former council when we were talking about the homestead, under the three-tier, is the commercial still this top of the three rates? Or are, can there be shifting of the commercial and the non-owner-occupied?
Yes.
So can, no, the question is though, right now, the way, so can the, you have commercial, non-owner-occupied, owner-occupied, can the one and two slots flip? Meaning, can you have non-owner-occupied be top, then commercial?
Yes.
Only in a reval? Okay.
Yes. I think Alan answered it correctly. As long as they don't spread by more than that amount, you can have any mix. Again, that's the flexibility of it. You can do what you want. Because you may want the commercial rate at some time in the future to be less than the rental rate, particularly if you want to get tax incentive stuff, you know, to bring, you know, professional businesses in. That would be one way to do it. So, I mean, again, it's a more flexible tool for you to use. It's not just.
All right, Harry, you got, you got a rate here, non-owner-occupied rental residential rate. We don't have that class right now, right?
Right.
We have, we have two classes, residential and commercial.
Right.
And we have a homestead exemption.
Right, which was, which would be owner-occupied. And then there's non-owner-occupied.
Residentially, owner-occupied.
So there's no non-owner-occupied rental rate.
That's the change you would make by doing this.
So can you create another class of individuals?
You can have two residential rates if you do away with the homestead.
You can't have, you can't have a three-tier with the rest.
But it's only owner-occupied and non-owner.
Right.
But the only classification you can have by state statute is owner-occupied and non-owner-occupied. Rental does not come into the verbiage.
It's just a rate, it's just a rate difference between owner and non-owner-occupied, so there's no prohibition of those non-owner-occupied homes from being rented.
Right.
Exactly, yeah, there's no, nothing in the law that's.
So it's just owner-occupied and non-owner, I mean, if we decide, because we have an ordinance, so those people that are, quote, renting their property would have to register those properties, but we can't classify them as rental properties, we have to classify them as non-owner-occupied as a class.
So, so if we're calling, we went from, what, 32% of the homestead, so we're going, again, we're taking the homestead or the lower third tier and diluting it with non-owner-occupied non-rentals. People who are here two months a year, we're going to give them that lower tier, and again, diluting that homestead or the lower third tier to where, to me, statistically, you're not going to get that lower third tier lower than the current homestead.
I show on, on the last, you know, page.
Well, you said, you said yourself that, you said yourself that these numbers aren't correct.
They are correct.
You're off by a million and a half, you just admitted.
No, I wrote, all these numbers roll up to the same 49. something in my spreadsheet, okay? If there's a million dollar difference, or a half a million dollar difference, or more than that.
Everybody's crying two weeks ago about 20, 20 cent difference on a thousand.
Appreciate the principle of this, let's not argue over the decimal point, okay? My point is that you're not diluting the effect of the homestead, you're applying the best rate to two-thirds of the homes instead of one-third of them.
So that will keep it 950.
In three years, you can equip, you can get to pretty much, you know, 950.
But until then, that.
I rounded these, you know, whether it's 950 or 955.
Right. But the lowest, right now, if we switched it in one day, okay?
If you switched what in?
If we, if we went to a three-tier in one day, based on these numbers, where you got your non-owner-occupied, which would be your rentals, right? At the 150%, is that where you're talking?
If, if you switched in one day, like the first slide shows, that's why I have the red question mark and the red dot. Because you're applying the lower rate to twice as many properties. Two-thirds of the properties instead of one-third of them.
Right.
You would have to make up for that difference.
Yeah, but let's be really, let's just be crystal clear, when you, and Matt made a good point. So if there's three, if there's, if there's multiple tiers or three classes, you can do whatever you want. The town council can say, we're going to jack the residential rate to be the highest. We're going to jack the commercial to be the lowest. So that's, quote, flexibility, but that's also, you know, flexibility, right? So that's all up to the council's discretion. So it's not just residential property that you can, I mean, if you implemented this today, you could keep the rates exactly the way you need to, as long as you fund our budget.
Yeah, but, 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 my, my point is, is that mathematically, statistically, I looked at this, and you cannot go to a three-tier next year without increasing that lower third tier above the current homestead tier that people are receiving now, the year-round owner-occupied people that should be getting the homestead, should be getting a lower tax rate, and not subsidizing vacation homeowners who are here two months a year.
What I showed you on this last page is that using the three-tier, it would take three years of 4% changes to get to approximately what we have today for what we now consider to be homestead exemption eligible homes.
The whole, right, I understand, I understand.
And Laura rolled this up, she might get slightly different, I mean, I won't argue with, you know, her numbers, but it's not going to change the relative balance of these numbers. You know, they may be slightly different, but the balance of them will be the same. The principle is correct. The principle is correct, okay? They're just, you know, numbers after all.
And what, do you think?
And I'll just say one other thing, you can only change, you can only increase the taxes by 4% anyway.
No, the budget.
You can only increase the budget by 4%.
The budget. So you can change, you change your tax rate by anything you want.
Harry, I want to say thank you very much for your presentation. Very helpful, excellent.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody else wishing to speak? Do you want us to bring the mic to you, Ray? Is she ready?
It's good to see you all again. I want to start out by just saying that, considering the item that's before us, and not this other forms of tax structure, that's what I came to talk about tonight, and I want you to know I support it. And my reasons are, well, I'll tell you my reasons in a minute. First of all, I want to talk about politics and principle. I think this proposal is a good one because it begins to move toward where we ought to be as a town, doesn't get there. But it's a start, and that's why I support it. I grew up in an era when my parents, my teachers, my Sunday school teachers, and even some of our national leaders, like John Kennedy, Robert Kennedy, Martin Luther King, extolled the virtues of equality and drilled those into me. This is why I'm so passionate about this subject. I don't believe that it is equitable or fair to have different rates for different groups of people. When we start dividing people into different classes... When we start dividing people into different classes, that's where we start to get in trouble. Troubles that lead to some pretty horrific things. An example would be Charlottesville, an extreme example. Fourteen years ago, Narragansett made the political decision to split tax rates. And there was no principle involved in that. It was, it was simply politics. A year ago, we saw an effort to reverse that. And yet what happened? Politics took over again and reversed that gain, what I consider a gain. I think we need to be governed primarily by principle. I think we've heard a lot in the last year or so, it may have started the year before that, about the need for flexibility. Everybody should understand that we're talking about political flexibility. Principles don't need flexibility. They operate on their own. Equality should not just be a word on an insignia or a motto sitting on a wall behind you. It means something. It means a lot to me. And I think eventually, we should get to that point where we treat everybody equally. I can make the argument that the ultimate goal of all these other systems that have been promoted is to give the biggest tax break in town to the wealthiest people in town, or at least those who own the most expensive homes. You've heard the argument over and over how the biggest businesses get a big tax break. Same thing happens with residences, if you go for some of these things. And, and that's why I don't, I don't agree with them. And I think they're misguided. But let's get back to the matter that's really before us tonight, is whether you should reduce the tax rate on businesses to the one hundred and twenty-five percent level. I think that's well reasoned. I think it's a good step. I think it should be equal. I think it should be a hundred percent. Maybe this town isn't ready for that yet. Part of the problem is that when, back fourteen years ago, we gave businesses the higher rate, people began to think they're entitled to what they have, you know, what their rate is. And they begin to say, every time these issues come up, they begin to say, you want to raise my taxes? They say, no, you've had a tax break for fourteen years. You should be thankful for that. And yet, on and on we go. One of the things about tax equality is you'll never have to deal with these issues again if you do what every other South County town, I believe, does. It taxes on an equal basis. You don't have to go through this year after year. You don't need the flexibility at the time of budget season to discriminate against one group or another. One other thing I would point out about that as far as business is concerned, businesses need to be able to have some predictability in their expenses when you're not going to tell them what their tax rate is gonna be. And I know, they can't know perfectly, ever, but, but if you're going to not tell them whether it's, you know, a hundred percent or a hundred and fifty percent until two months before the tax bill goes out, they've already set their prices for what they sell their product for that summer. And the same thing happens with rental properties, for instance, that have to commit to what their prices are gonna be sometime, usually in January, sometimes sooner than that. And I would ask that, at the very least, don't wait until April or May to make that decision. Make it before the end of the year so people can plan for and predict what their expenses are gonna be. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ray. Carol?
Thank you. I just have a couple of questions. Into the microphone. Just, no, I don't think so. Just a couple of questions. By the way, I do not consider wealthy, wealthy individuals or wealth to be a disgrace. Some people are able to rise above their status and do well, and good for them. Happy with the status I have. So I don't like to hear those kinds of comments about the wealthiest people will get the biggest break, kind of dialogue. But now to my question. I've never said that the businesses do not deserve some kind of a reduction. I said that from the beginning when it came up last year. However, from a lack of knowledge about the businesses in town, a few years ago, I did the, I looked on the website for demographics in Narragansett, and they listed the town, the town's businesses, and of course, like, the homes and all that. My question is, and I don't know the finances or the budgetary constraints or non-constraints. My question is, do we know and do we have an analysis? And do we have a picture of the number of businesses in town, their number of employees, where they're located, and the potential impact? Because I know that when the homestead was discussed, we knew how many, approximately how many homes were rented, how many were full-time, and then we got to see how many applied, which was not quite as many as people expected. So from my perspective and from my past professional careers, an analysis has to be done before making decisions. And so I would just like to know, that data, is it available so that the town knows where it's going with the reduction and how much reduction you can possibly afford? Because you're saying, do it now. And how do we know our situation come next April? And how do we know how much? I can see that there's a need to, to have the businesses encouraged and not discouraged. But you can't say every other town, that's a simple statement and it's a stereotypical or not a clear statement at all because Narragansett's geographics are completely different than Wakefield. Wakefield has a main street where all those little shops can line up. East Greenwich, main street. Westerly, main street. We don't have a main street. Will we ever come up or rise up to the level we'd like to with businesses? Who knows? How many have dropped out? How many are coming? Where can they come? Where can they make their money? Right now, we know it's most, a lot of the business are, are stable. We have hardware stores and, you know, things like that that remain, paint stores or whatever. But we know some of the restaurants and the hotels, I thought the hotels do all right. But anyway, you, you know what I'm trying to say? So they're seasonal and they're put at a disadvantage to a South Kingsdale or a Westerly or a Richmond. So I'm just saying, can we do an analytical study to see what the impact would be? That's, that, that's it.
So the, so one piece of data that you do have, and Alan and Laura have been, you know, gracious enough to, to share it, and that is based on the assessed values of every commercial property in town. You see what their assessed values are, and you see what the impact of those particular businesses would be. So we've been down that road already individually. The, the tax role for commercial properties is, you know, I, I mean, I can do the math, but it's two-hundred-and-ninety-eight million dollars. The residential tax role is four-point-two billion dollars. So, so if burden, if burden is going to be shifted to start kind of removing the disparity, you have to find, you know, the least impact on the residents. And so that's why I keep going back to nineteen cents for full-time homesteaders. First comment. Second comment, if I can remember what I was gonna say about demographics. I think I was going to say that, yes, South County towns are different, but there's, you know, again, thirty-nine cities and towns in the state of Rhode Island, which still is kind of insane to me that there's that many cities and towns with different philosophies. But if you look at a city like Newport, which is a city which has huge numbers of commercial properties, which has huge transient populations and such, they need to fund the existence of their full-time residents in a certain fashion, right? So that's why there's, I, I believe, that's why the philosophy in Newport extends itself to those rate differentials. I think also that extends itself to the reason why they fine, you know, you know, violating landlords, you know, to the tune of fifteen thousand and five thousand. There's huge numbers that flow around in that city. We're not like that here. And I believe, I truly believe, as I, again, there was, there was campaign rhetoric on my part, and then there's also, and none, it hasn't changed very much, but I do, I have had many, many conversations with the businesses that I use in town. And those are the businesses that we want to see stick around. And so this particular, and you asked, why do it now? Well, the fact is, we have to do it in a reevaluation year, so that's why we started the conversation now, so. I think I was gonna say something else, but I can't remember.
Thank you, Carol. Emery?
Thank you, Carol.
Joe? Yeah, of course. We have about fifteen minutes.
Well, Patrick said we had to fill the time. I'm glad, thank you, hello. For a minute there, I thought I was at the wrong meeting, so this is good. That council, Councilor Moretti brought it back to what this was for. I'm actually here just representing the Chamber of Commerce, thanking you for the consideration that it even came up now, that there's a discussion again about helping the businesses in town. Why we just, I feel like we got off the rails tonight. I just don't know why. Carol even brought it back to perspective here, looking at the numbers again, so that, that's helpful. In Councilor Moretti's numbers too, something that did just come up and concerns me, we're talking about seven percent of the businesses are, you know, representing the tax base. If we go back to last year alone, when we were having these discussions, the number eight percent was being used. And if you go back, I believe, don't hold me to this, two thousand and three, right, twelve percent. So these are things the chamber has been watching as well too. So it is encouraging, and that's all I'm here to say tonight. And if there's anything the chamber can do to participate in a good discussion on taxes regarding businesses and why we got off on homestead and some of these other things, I didn't see where the correlation was tonight. But I'm hoping that the chamber can be looked at as a resource. Thank you, Councilor, too, for talking to all the businesses. We sent out a notice about ten days ago about this meeting, and just to get some quick input. And again, everyone's very busy. It's the height of the year. But the initial reaction was, are you sure about it? Is that what they want? It was that type of thing. And so everyone's pretty excited to at least address it. And if we have the rest of the calendar year into the next budget year, that would be helpful.
I had a question. Go stand down. When we implemented the homestead, didn't the businesses take an, an extra hit because they had to cover that homestead? So instead of, you know, it was a hundred and fifty percent over ten sixty instead of the lower rate of ten oh, I think it was ten oh eight or something last year. So they took an additional hit. But have you, because of the weather we had this summer, do you find a lot of seasonal businesses kind of are off this year? And this is exactly why we need to have more of a fair tax.
The numbers aren't in, but the general consensus, obvious, we've had certain days that created this flood into town.
Right.
Or two or three days at a time. We have not had the type of ongoing, let's say, investment of money from all over the East Coast, if you will, not just Rhode Islanders or whatever. It has a limit this year. So you will hear, obviously, some people say it wasn't the best summer compared to two years ago, where we just had phenomenal weather.
Okay, thank you.
So I just, I just had, I do remember now, Carol, what I was gonna say. I forgot what I was gonna say, but I remember. So there are certain people that I have talked to in the last, I don't know, six months. And, and they've actually have, you know, they own a lot of property in town. And they've done, they paid for consultants to do research for themselves, right? So do I sell this property? Do I give it to my kids? Do I develop it residentially? Do I develop it commercially? It's their life savings. They bought acres and acres, you know, fifty years ago, or whatever the number was. And, you know, my, my beliefs originally were, oh, that, this would support this, no problem. Well, then I read, you know, these consultants' reports for this, you know, particular people, and certain things are not supported. Commercial developments, for instance, are not supported in certain aspects. So, so, you know, and, and Ray actually did say it in a, Ray Cagle's did say it in a certain way during the campaign. But, and I don't believe it's completely true, but, you know, he used the term, the ship has sailed. I don't know if it's completely sailed away. But again, I'll go back to the main point of, we have residents that live in town that own small businesses, and this is a step in that direction. So that was the sentiment in which this was developed.
And last point, we have residents who live in town, two of which have moved their businesses out of town for whatever the reasons are. But we should be proactive to try to at least give them an option. And that's just something we in the chamber would love to work with you on.
Thank you, Joe. Emery?
Emery Silveira, thank you for the opportunity. I wanted to go back to fourteen years ago. I was on the town council. Brian Hendrigan, God rest his soul, was the president at the time. And he was the one that put on the agenda to have the commercial property fifty percent more than residential. It was not a political move. The, the reason being, my recollection is that we went with vision appraisals. We were getting our properties evaluated. And he felt it was gonna be a hundred percent. The valuations were gonna be a hundred percent. And he felt that because businesses make more money than residential people, that it was time to give the residents a break and put the tax burden on businesses. And that's why that happened. It did, you know, it stayed that way right up until now. It could have always been changed. It never was. But at the time, it was because of the appraisals, the valuations were gonna be a hundred percent. And he felt that, and the council agreed with him, that resident, residential properties, people can't always afford a hundred percent. We didn't want people leaving town. It was probably back then that the school population was declining. And we didn't want people leaving because of the taxes. So it was not a political move on the town council's part, and I just wanted to clear that, that up. So if you have any questions, okay, thank you very much.
I got a question for Alan. Alan, are we now, well, you can, you can listen, listen in. Are we assessing commercial properties better in two thousand and seventeen?
Better?
Yes.
In, in the forty years I've been doing this, we've done it the best we can. Properties are assessed with the best available data at a hundred percent of market value.
Correct.
So are we assessing them better than we did before? We've always assessed them as best we could.
Right.
The phenomenon that occurred in Newport, I, I was part of Newport, so I can speak to Newport. I don't know what happened in. I don't know what happened in Narragansett. But in 2002, 2003, there was a huge increase in the popularity and value of residential The commercial properties were relatively stagnant. To put it in today's dollars, retail property was renting for $10 a foot. Five years later, it was still renting for $10 a foot. Commercial, residential property was selling for $350,000. Five years later, it was selling for $700,000.
Correct.
When the city of Newport did the 2001 revaluation, residential properties had gone from $300,000 to $700,000. Commercial property had gone from $1 million to $950,000.
Correct.
When they looked at the budget, they said the bars and restaurants and hotels in Newport are going to see a 50% decrease in their taxes, and the residential people are going to see a 50% increase in, or 150% increase in taxes. The concept was that if the bars and restaurants were comfortable paying $10,000, $15,000 last year, rather than sending them a bill this year for $5,000 or $7,500, we would try to keep them paying the $10,000 or $15,000 they were paying. There were a lot of discussions with representatives from the state and local businesses, and for the most part, the local businesses basically agreed that, yes, if we pay $10,000 last year, we can pay $10,000 this year. We don't have a problem with that differential, which relieved some of the burden, as people have said over and over again, if you're, you bought the house for $50,000, 40, 50 years later, you retired, and suddenly you have a million-dollar home. You may not have that kind of money in your social security check to pay the taxes. So it was an effort to reduce the effect of that shift in value from the commercial to the residential. Were properties back in 2001 properly valued? Yes, they were. Just that the commercial property was not worth the same increase that residential property was experiencing.
It's been stagnant for years.
It was stagnant for years. Now, it seems to be picking up pretty well.
Little bit. But right now, the sales that have been going on for the last couple of years, commercial properties have been selling below their assessment. I know that for a fact, but, I mean, can you attest to that?
I'd have to look at the data.
But there's all, you know, there's a foreclosed commercial property up there on Dean Klaus right now, and it's for $450. It's a 6,000-square-foot building. Here's a deal for you, Harry. So 6,000-square-foot building. They're asking, I think, $460 for it, and it's been sitting there for six months.
Where is it?
The north end in the industrial park.
Okay. I just want to get to one more speaker.
So, and that's assessed at $800,000, and you can't give it away at $460. So this is the disparity I'm talking about.
So it's 7:15, and we do have to get ready for the meeting at 7:30, so I'll take a couple more, but very briefly, come on up.
Susan, as that person's coming up, I have one quick statement. Thank you, Anne Marie, for the history, because that's really important. There's a lot of rhetoric and things said, but that history really tells us what's going on, and it's important for us to learn the history and not just make knee-jerk reactions. So thank you.
And not repeat.
Yeah, we're just going to try to be brief.
I came in on the tail end, but I saw the proposed three-tier tax rate, and as a tax assessor in another state, I can just attest that I think that is just a very challenging concept to implement. I'm sure Alan can attest that. Any assessor will say that, you know, it's very tough to do. The second point I want to make is that we keep talking about these businesses, which comprise about 7% of this multi-billion-dollar database, and it's the same businesses over and over and over in the same spots because we don't have an abundance of land that's zoned for expansion of existing businesses. So I think Ray's right. The stability factor of having a single rate that's nonprejudicial for every class, I think, is the most reassuring, most compelling, and most fair. And the final point I want to make, as a, seeing that three-tier proposal, which I, again, came in late on, is I fall into that landlord class, but I also live in town, and we also have an investment in this town. On Saturday morning, as a landlord, just before noon, I went to Stop &amp; Shop, Jerry's twice, the bakery next to Stop &amp; Shop once, Sunset Farm once, the pier laundromat on the way home. And then, and then, this is before 12 o'clock, and then when I got there, I had to pay my cleaners a small fortune, and the guy that I employed to cut my grass was cutting my lawn. And this story is not unique. I'm not the only landlord that does that. I want to say there's probably 2,700 others that live here that would be nearly, you know, were being demonized as landlords. I think the town's done a great job addressing the problem. You threw resources at the problem. The statistics are, you know, show that it's a success, so I think it's time to just be nice. Thank you.
Thank you. We have time, Steve, we have time for maybe two more speakers, and then I'm going to have to conclude the workshop as it's getting late.
Thank you, council members. I'll be brief. Just one comment about the last call. Contrary to, you know, people that own real estate, there are people, retirees, that hire people in town and use the town services also. So just as an aside, and it's not a war between the people that rent and don't rent. What I'd like to say is, I think this is an option that needs to be explored. The town has changed a lot. At one point, Eastwood Look had a lot of families in it, and I think as much as with the rest of the town, it's becoming an investment mecca. The reason why, it possibly could be the tax structure. There's a lot of issues that the town really doesn't know what it wants to look like in 10 years. Here's an adjustment that may be made that can back in someone that basically a lot of these are hybrid businesses, let's face it. And, you know, I don't like to say the word "fair," but they are in a different category than the residential area. This adds another tier. It adjusts the burden a little more. And I agree with you, Mike, you know, we want to look at the tax adjustment for our small businesses, and we did last time, but, you know, it's basically, part of the problems is it's all based on valuation. So, you know, if you go by the last chart we had the last time, the top people that get, you know, you have to go way down to the bottom to some of our small businesses went. And I know it's hard to do targeted relief to certain people, but what I'm trying to get is there are other options to do this. Nobody's really complaining that the businesses have to enjoy a little bit of relief, just like everybody should. Someone has to pay for it, and I think if we're going to do something like that, we just split it up, and there's some profit-making operations that at least should be considered at a different tax rate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I'm going to conclude the workshop. It's 7:20, and we do need 10 minutes to get ready for the business meeting, so thank you. More to come on taxation in the town of Narragansett.